...of the town of Sturbridge formerly known as New Medfield. If you could all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. As is our practice, we're going to have a moment of silence for several purposes. First is for the 6,984 U.S. servicemen who have died in the Iraqi war, which is Operation Iraqi Freedom, and in Afghanistan, Operation Enduring Freedom, and all the other, there are several other operations, that's what the total is. We also like to remember tonight all of the people who have suffered and died and been injured in the wave of mass shootings that we've had, students, teachers, administrators, municipal employees, civilians, church people, church attendees, and everyone else. Third is, as also our practice, we'd like to remember a person who was involved in town government who passed, and that's Dolores Cordermange, who was a library trustee. And last, we want to remember James Blanchard, the son of Charlie and Mary Blanchard, who recently passed away, he succumbed to cancer. Just have a moment. Thank you, may be seated. Okay, as our practice is, we're going to identify everybody up here on the stage so you know who to boo and who to cheer, starting from my far right.
Priscilla Dumas, Board of Selectmen.
Chase Kobinski, Board of Selectmen.
Mike Supernat, Board of Selectmen.
Mary Dowling, Board of Selectmen.
Jeff Bridges, Town Administrator.
John Eitman, Town Council.
We want to welcome Jeff Bridges, our new Town Administrator, to the town and hope he has a long and successful tenure. Lynn.
Lynn Gerard, Town Clerk.
Kathy Neal, Finance Committee.
Jim Waddick, Finance Committee.
Karen Davis, Finance Committee.
Mike Hager, Finance Committee.
Joni Light, Finance Committee.
Kevin Smith, Finance Committee.
Jared Burns, Finance Committee.
Larry Morrison, Finance Committee.
Bruce Boyson, Finance Committee.
Okay, thank you. Now, the town charter and the town bylaws require that I announce the appointment of any Finance Committee members whose terms are up. I'm reappointing tonight Kathleen Neal, Lawrence Morrison, and Bruce Bryson for another three-year term. Their term expires now on June 30th, the new term will go from June 30th, I'm sorry, July 1st of 2019 through July 1st of 2001, what is it, '22, right? 2021, '22, right, okay. That doesn't take a vote, that's my prerogative. Now, a few procedural issues, all the non-voters, people that don't have those passionate pink cards, and that's what the Town Clerk is called, is passionate pink, but please stand, all the non-voters that don't have those cards. Okay, state law requires that I identify you people, and I ask you to sit in a designated area, and the designated area is the ones you're sitting in right now, so just take those seats. They should not be voting, if you people catch any of these rascals voting, please let me know and we'll deal with them appropriately. Okay. Sit in one area, we have the town officials pretty much down in front, which is helpful if we need their assistance in any article. How we vote usually is by holding up this voting card, so if I ask you if you're for an article or against it, at the appropriate time, hold that card up and we'll count it. If needs be, if I decide that the vote is too close to call, or if seven voters come forward and say they want a, it's called a standing count, we'll appoint counters and we'll do that tonight. We have a relatively small and intimate group here tonight, so I don't think we're going to need that, but let's see what happens. Okay, a few general procedures, as is our practice, the Chair will accept a couple of motions. One, that all speakers be limited in any oral presentation to four minutes in length, which period may be extended by the moderator in his discretion for good cause. Speakers who are not registered voters may be limited to less time, again, in the discretion of the moderator. And the second is that the meeting shall not begin consideration of any new article after 10:30 PM and shall recess or adjourn, whatever word you like, to a name, date, time, and place agreed upon by the meeting. Any article under which consideration has begun may be continued to completion of action on that article. Do I, is somebody going to make that motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, let's try out our pink passionate cards, passion pink, whatever they are. Any opposed? Passed unanimously, okay. Okay, general procedures. Most of the articles you're going to see tonight are majority rule article, in other words, 51% of the voters have to vote in favor of it. And we'll just call for a vote, we'll allow discussion and then call for a vote. On the town budget, we do things a little bit differently. We will read each departmental total. If you have any questions about that departmental's budget, or if you have any amendments or substitute motions, what we'd like you to do, and this is the only time we're going to take shouts from the audience, is for you to yell "Hold." We'll get your name and we'll ask you what particular line item within that budget you are seeking to hold on. When we've gone through the whole budget, we'll vote on everything that has not been held and approve that budget hopefully, and then we'll go back to the line items one by one and see what your concern was, what your question was, what your amendment is, what your substitute motion is, and deal with it line by line. Once we are all done everything, we'll then go back and hopefully approve the final budget as it's been amended, substitute motioned, whatever happened to it, up, down, sideways, whatever, okay. Now, again, I'm the moderator, my job, among other jobs, is to maintain order and civility in this meeting, and we never had a problem in my tenure, my 18 years here as moderator, and I hope that tonight will be the same. Do we have any children here tonight? I don't see any. If we do, we just ask the parents to use their own common sense, if the child is being a little bit disruptive or noisy, please just take the child out, and that's all we want. Imagine, it goes without saying, at the end of this meeting, or the beginning of this meeting, we all walked in here as friends, and we're all going to walk out here after the meeting, again, as friends, regardless of whether your particular viewpoint carried today or not, or someone else's viewpoint did. Okay, I've had a chance to look at the warrant, and the original warrant here. Okay, I've got the original warrant already, I think I threw it away, no I didn't, that's what I threw away, okay. And I've been satisfied that it's been properly prepared, that it's been properly posted, and it's been served by the constable, and that the return is affixed to it. Do I have a motion to accept the return?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, passionate pink cards up. Any opposed, raise your passionate pink cards. I carry unanimously. Okay, we also have a motion to waive the reading of the individual articles, the recommendations of the Finance Committee, and waive the necessity of seconding the Finance Committee recommendations. Well, what's that all about? Well, in some towns, they read the whole warrant, they proceed to spend a great deal of time reading the whole thing, which you can read, you have it in front of you, it was online for about a month, and they also read all the recommendations, the motions that are made by the Finance Committee. Now, the waiving of the seconding is that the Finance Committee's worked long and hard to develop these recommendations, they've had meetings, they've gone through parliamentary procedure, they make motions there, they second them, they vote, and this is the final result of it, so it's kind of redundant to make them go through that all over again. So we kind of, in the past, have waived that. So I would accept the motion to that extent.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your passionate pink cards. Okay, very good. Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Okay, now, at this point, we're going to have hopefully an opening statement, first by the Kathy Neal, the Chairman of the Finance Committee, Chairperson of the Finance Committee.
Oh, thank you, Mike. Thank you, voters, for taking part in our annual town meeting. Your voice and your vote activate this traditional meeting, which stands as America's oldest form of pure democracy. Tonight, you would determine the effect of our local government on the households and businesses of Sturbridge. The Finance Committee began working on the town meeting budget and warrant articles several months ago. The committee devoted a combined 301 hours in preparation. In doing the legwork, the Finance Committee understands behind the numbers and warrant articles, there are the needs and preferences of the town's more than 10,000 people. We are very thorough, that is why the always frugal Finance Committee examined the numbers behind the numbers, looking carefully at items as little as $100 and as big as $1 million or more with equal attention. The committee questioned every warrant article for its cost, purpose, urgencies, its alternatives, and its value to the town. In the life of the Sturbridge government, this has been somewhat of an unusual year. We've seen three Town Administrators come and come, and one now, hopefully will stay for a long time. Our original one departed for another post, and we had an acting one, and now we have Jeff on the job. Throughout that time, though, our Finance Director, Barbara Berry, took a direct hand in leading the budget process. We thank her for her diligence, attention to detail, enthusiasm, and knowledge. We also express our appreciation to the school administration, as well as all the department heads, who came forward and exchanged with us their views, their initiative, their expertise, and of course, their commitment to public service. One thing I would like to point out, as I think I often do, is the town's bond rating. It's not something you always like to think about, but like your own credit rating, it does determine the strength of the town's finances. Just as if your credit rating is low, you're not going to get a very good rating on your mortgage, and same thing can apply to the town when it goes to borrow funds. Standard and Poor's has given us a double A-plus stable rating, looks at our financial policies and procedures, and finds that we have a strong outlook. This is because of our budgeting practices and policies set by the Board of Selectmen. The town charter here assigns responsibility to the Finance Committee to do the legwork of looking at all the numbers that are before you tonight. But now, it's your turn. We turn to you now to question, discuss, and vote. Thank you.
Next, Jeff Bridges, our new Town Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, I'd just like to welcome all the voters here this evening, and thankful for your participation in this process, very important to the town. I'd also like to thank the department heads for working so diligently on putting together a good budget, and the Board of Selectmen for their diligence on the warrants, and the FinCon Committee for their very detailed review of all the product of both, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. And last, we're going to hear from Mary Dowling, the Vice Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
I also want to welcome everybody, I don't want to be redundant, but you know, I do believe we have the best form of government for a small town because it puts the decision-making directly in the hands of residents where it should be. We make recommendations, but ultimately, it's your decision as the legislature. So I want to thank everybody for being here tonight as well, to participate in the political process. It's a beautiful spring night, and you could be a lot of other places right now, but you chose to be here, so thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, just a couple of final points, then we'll get to the actual articles. Just take a second, familiarize yourself where all the fire exits are. God forbid we ever have a disaster here, it's nice to know where these exits are if we have to get out of here in a hurry. And part and parcel of that is, it's a requirement of the State Fire Marshal and of this moderator that everybody is in a seat. The only person that's excused from that is our Constable, standing up there against the wall, because he needs to supervise. Everyone else should be in a seat because of the State Fire Marshal regulations, and secondly, because I can't count votes if you're wandering around, it's very hard to do, so. I will interrupt the meeting and stop proceedings if we have people that are not in seats. Okay, now, having said that, let's start the actual articles, and we start with Article 1, Town Reports. In many towns, at a town meeting, you will actually have all the different town departments stand up and give a verbal report of what their activities were for the last year. Sturbridge were fortunate, our practice here has become that they're either in the Finance Committee report or in the annual report of the town, which you can read at your leisure, but they still have to be adopted and accepted by the town's voters, so Article 1 is to accept those reports. There's a couple of reports you're going to hear anyways later, the Community Preservation Committee, maybe some other things too. But anyways, the recommendation of the Finance Committee, and that's the motion that we act on, is to approve the article as written. Any discussion on that? Remember, we've waived seconds, so. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, hold up your passionate pink card. Any opposed? Carries unanimously. And these will be all majority rule articles until and unless I tell you different. There's only a few that are either two-thirds or a different quantum of vote. The second is the Community Preservation Committee report. Again, as I just said, the Community Preservation Committee has to give a report, and it's separate from the other town reports. It is contained, however, in the Finance Committee report, and it's in the back. Is there any discussion on this? Yes, Ms. Dumas. And if you want to speak, please come forward and use this microphone, address the moderator, and we'd like to alternate if we can, if there's any argument or discussion, let's not call it argument, let's call it discussion, pros and cons, makes it a more interesting discussion instead of having 10 people all opposed, or 10 people all in favor or something. Please.
Good evening, Penny Dumas, 136 Walker Pond Road.
Can you hear her? You guys hear her in the back? Okay.
I want to thank the Finance Committee, they had found a discrepancy on our report, so I'd like to do a substitute motion on page 49, you'll see our report, and the last line of it, the total anticipated FY '20 revenues should read $553,675. Thank you for bringing that up.
Could you say again the change, please, so we can get it up here?
Five hundred, $553,675.
That's what you wanted to read.
Five five three six seven five point zero zero.
Okay, do we have that, did we get that number? Okay. Okay, is there a second to that? Any discussion? We have a second. Yes, sir, Mr. Goodwin, is it? Yes. Discussion? No, no discussion. Okay. No discussion, all in favor of the substitute motion to amend the amount in the report. Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Article 3, the Community Preservation Committee Administration Funds. It takes money to do what they have to do, in terms of secretarial time, stamps, paper, all that good stuff, and this is what they're asking for, $22,000. Generally, in my memory, and I could be corrected, they don't use all their money up and they turn back a good-sized chunk of that money to the town at the end of the year, so. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, passionate pink up. Any opposed? Also carries unanimously. Article 4, Community Preservation Debt Service. As you may remember, over time, we've used community preservation money not to buy something necessarily outright, but to pay a loan, pay back the bank, so to speak, and this is what it is. This is the article where we're authorizing their money to be used to pay outstanding loans, which we pledged their money to previously. Recommendation of the Finance Committees to approve the article as written. Any comments, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Article 5, Community Preservation Committee Gravestones Restoration. And this has been an ongoing project that the Community Preservation Committee has been funding, they're seeking $9,500 for the repair of 15 to 20 historic gravestones. Recommendation of the Finance Committees to approve the article as written. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Article 6, Community Preservation Committee Comprehensive Housing Study. And this is to create, which, a housing study, which by state law is supposed to have done every five years, we haven't done it since 2007. And this is, one of the purposes of the community preservation monies is for affordable housing, and not finding fault, but it has been an area in which the, and not much attention has been paid over the years, so this is a welcome step forward if you're in favor of it. Recommendation of the Finance Committees to approve the article as written. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Article 7, Community Preservation Committee, the Riverland Development and General Trail Improvement. Recommendation of the Finance Committees to approve the article as written. Do we have any discussion on this? All these funds are coming from the community preservation money, we're not taking it directly out of the tax levy. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It carries, it is not, however unanimous. Article 8, Community Preservation Committee, Town Seminary Signs. Recommendation of the Finance Committees to approve the article as written, they're seeking $1,000 for signs. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? It carries, it is unanimous. Article 9, Community Preservation Committee, the Grand Trunk Trail Central Section Feasibility Design Study. Recommendation of the Finance Committees to approve the article as written. Do we have any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Article 10, Community Preservation Committee, Old Sturbridge Village Easement Costs for Grand Trunk Trail Easement. Now, initially, you may have seen on the town meeting warrant that was listed as a two-thirds vote. Town Council has weighed in on this topic, and they have ruled that it is not a two-thirds vote, it is a simple majority vote. The reason that you might have thought it was two-thirds is that under Mass General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 14, I think, if the town acquires a piece of land, you have to approve that by two-thirds vote. However, community preservation is exempted from that requirement, it is a simple majority vote. So because we're using community preservation money, it's not two-thirds, it's a simple majority. Okay, any discussion on this article, of that boring explanation? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? It carries, it is not unanimous. Okay, we're up to Article 11. Now, this is the town budget that we talked about before. How we're going to do it is I'm going to read, and that's in that lavender book, which I hope everybody has a copy of, and I believe it's, what page is that in the book, Kathy? Page 1? Page 1, I guess it's pretty easy, fine, okay, good. Okay, what we're going to do is read the departmental budget. Now, I'm just going to use the Board of Selectmen, that's the first department, and in that it says purchase of services, other charges, total expenses, and Board of Selectmen total. That's the only number I'm going to read, is the total. If you have any question or substitute motions about any of those other lines in there, please shout out nice and loud "Hold," this is your one opportunity to say something from your seat, so please take advantage of it if you want to. And we'll then ask you your name, to know who the person is we're going to cut back to, and ask you what line it is, and you'll tell us purchase of services, other charges, total expenses, and then we'll go through it like that. Okay, we all clear on this? Okay, I hope we are. Okay, so I can start at the beginning, that's Board of Selectmen total, $2,900. Town Administrator total, $254,034. Finance Committee total, $7,189. Town Accountant total, $96,847. Board of Assessors total, $142,196. Finance Director total, $262,69. Town Council total, $100,000. Information Technology total, $184,781. Town Clerk total, $107,914. Elections and Registration total, $28,448. Moving on to page 4. Okay, Conservation Commission total, $88,322. Planning Department total, $177,718. Zoning Board of Appeals total, $590. Economic Development total, $20,823. Facilities total, $117,171. Town Hall total, $48,215. Center Office Building total, $43,110. On to page 6. Senior Center Building total, $27,649. Joshua Hyde Library Building total, $25,314. Safety Complex total, $93,460. Nursery School total, $2,350. Eight Brookfield Road, $1,300. Page 7. Police Department, $3,42,225. Okay, what line do you want to hold?
I'm not sure if it's salary wages or personnel costs.
And your name, please. Rob Serny, okay. So you're saying we want to hold salary wages, or what's the other one?
Or personnel costs.
Okay, we'll get back to those. Okay, Fire Department, $1,574,900. Building Inspector, $125,729. Sealer of Weights and Measures total, $5,350. Inspectors, Electrical and Plumbing, $58,465. Tree Warden total, $20,710. Education, and this lumps together Burgess and Tantasca, and we're going to maybe take those two separate, I'm going to break those out. Burgess is $11,770,442, and Tantasca is $7,199,324. The total of the two is $18,975,766.
It's a total of three.
Total of three, I'm sorry, and the Charter School, you're right, $6,000 for transportation. Thank you for picking that up. Department of Public Works, $1,046,538. Town Road Maintenance, $6,000. Snow and Ice Removal, $218,719. Landfill Recycling Center, $278,855. Board of Health, $109,218. Community Health, $4,000. Inspections and Testing total, $46,091. This is the Public Health Inspector, not the Electrical and Building. Council on Aging, $144,351. Veteran Services, $65,457. And who's that? Who's the person who wants to hold that?
We were.
Okay, we got that?
Veterans benefits.
Okay, thank you. And what line do you want to hold, sir?
Veterans benefits.
Veterans benefits, okay, fine. Okay, Joshua Hyde Library Operations, $501,671. Trails Committee, $400. Historical Commission, $1,200. Debt Service Principal, this is the debts that the town has contracted for in the past, Debt Service Interest, again, the interest on those debts, $411,842. That Famous Department Unclassified, $4,86,835. Central Purchasing, $338,900. Now, we're not voting on this total budget, but if we were to adopt the budget as recommended by the Finance Committee and all the numbers I read with their recommendations, the budget would be $34,079,952. And by my recollection, we've had two holds, one was on the Police Department and one was on Veteran Services, is that correct, Jim?
That's correct.
Okay.
Line 66, on the Police Department, Rob Serny.
Okay, why don't we start with that? Oh, I'm sorry, except for those two areas, those two budgets, we have a motion, we already have a motion on the floor, which has been seconded, to approve those budgets, save these two items we're going to talk about in a minute. Any discussion on the remaining budget? All the other items that were not held, all in favor of approving that budget? Any opposed? That budget carries unanimously. Now, let's go to, is it item?
Line 66.
Line 66, Mr. Serny, the floor is yours. Do you have a question, or an amendment, or a substitute motion?
I don't know who this will be addressed to, either Chief Ford or the Finance Committee. With the salaries for the Police Department or the personnel costs, I know we're adding the additional school resource officer up here at the high school, is that included in that number? It is? Now, the question I-
Hold it, which one is chief, is it in the salaries or is it in the personnel cost? Salaries.
All right, the reason I'm asking is, I believe Hillary Murray, she's the SRO of Burgess, and I noticed her salary was 65.5, but on top of that, she got $36,782 worth of overtime, and are we going to be paying for, is it going to be the same situation with the SRO up here? I don't know how that's going to work if we've- I don't know how that's gonna work if we've talked to the other school districts or not, and how the overtime would work with that.
Chief, do you wanna address that, or?
You could just point out that second figure.
It's actually in the book.
Chief, why don't you come on the, please use the microphone, Chief.
Yeah, that's in the Tom Ward report.
Chief, microphone.
The overtime and other considerations that are in the annual report include her education incentive and her overtime. I know that Hillary works very little overtime in the course of a year, and I, and just my best guess of time that she puts in overtime at the school is probably less than 20 hours a year of overtime. So that figure that you see is her education incentive plus any overtime or details that she's worked throughout the year. So that's not part of her base salary, and a good portion of it has not anything to do with her SRO.
So now we have the overtime cost on her additional $36,000, whatever it was?
That additional number, that 35 or 36, I don't have the book in front of me either. But that was part of her education incentive, which is a portion of her base salary, a percentage of her base salary. If she's worked details throughout the year, that's included in there, and any overtime costs, I believe are included in there as well.
So the question I'm asking was, when it comes to the new SRO up here, and across the street, are there we gonna be incurring the same kind of overtime costs with that officer?
See, I guess the misunderstanding is that we're not, the SROs are not working overtime at the schools. The only overtime that they'd ever work at the schools would be for a special function, and usually that has been budgeted for and/or is a detail that's paid for by the school.
And I wasn't really concerned as who pays for it necessarily, because it's gonna be us that are gonna be paying for it.
Right.
And that's why I was wondering if the new officers also are gonna be getting overtime, not related to the school, just that-
Well, that number, that number may be separated, so if that officer up here is, works daytime at the school all day, but happens to take 16 hours of details on the weekends, every weekend, or does boat patrol on the weekend, or some other overtime source, then that's the number you're seeing. I know that last summer Hillary took a lot of boat patrols, and I know that she worked a number of the highway details on Route 20 at night. So, and then you take her education incentive, you put that onto it, that's what gets you to that 35 or 36,000 number that you read in the book. It's not all the, that's not derived from all time at the school.
Yeah, it had nothing to do with the school at all, I was just curious about the number and where it came from.
And yeah, that's-
Does that answer your question, Mr. Serny? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we've answered his question, now can we vote on that line item? Any further discussion on that? Ready to vote? Okay, all in favor of the police budget, which I'll repeat the number, and it's line 66?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. So the budget, which is Police Department total, was $3,42,225,000.
No, you only voted the 27, right?
No, we're voting the whole thing. We never, we didn't, we held that line, that whole thing, okay? We held that whole department because of that. Okay, okay, so the motion by the Finance Committee is to appropriate a budget of $3,42,225. Any further discussion of that? I saw, I thought I saw a sign, a hand up, guess not. All in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Okay, and the other line item that was being held is Veteran Services, and do we have a number for that, Jim?
120.
Okay, 120. Yes, sir. Why don't you-
Yeah, I'm Tom LaQuire.
Why don't you pick that, you can pick that out of the, take it out of the holder. You're a little too tall.
Don LaQuire, 110, Lead Mine Lane. Since I've been here, I've seen this Veterans Benefits exploding, and the amount of money that we're giving them. Now, under the VA, what they do, if you have a benefit or disability, they go before a doctor, and then they approve it, and then it goes before a committee, and depending on your disability, how much money that you get from the government. How do you figure, what are we, how are we distributing this money? Are we going before a doctor, or are we just passing it out?
Okay, well, why don't we direct that to the Finance Committee, which should approve this budget? Does somebody in the Finance Committee wanna address this?
Well, we might need clarification, but I believe that, number one, there has been an increase in the number of veterans who have been coming for benefits, and secondly, I believe that we are reimbursed by the state for, I wanna say, two-thirds, 75 percent? 75 percent of this amount here, we get it back later from the state, it's reimbursed. And I, I believe that they do have to go through a process to get the veterans benefits, yes, I don't exactly know what that is, but I know that there has been an increase in the numbers who have been requesting benefits.
But how are we distributing this? By their disability, or just by being in a service, or we just throwing money out there? How is it being distributed?
Barbara, can you address this?
Barbara Berry, Finance Director, there are income requirements involved, and then all the information has to be submitted to the state, and the state actually has to approve the, whatever's submitted by the Veterans Agent for each of the individuals that are applying. The Chair of the Finance Committee is correct. The number of individuals that are receiving benefits has increased over the years. I know that our Veterans Agent also works hard to work with the veterans that are getting the benefits, to get them, if they are eligible for federal benefits, to get them into the federal program, as opposed to the 115 benefits. So not, so no. So to your question, does everyone just get these benefits? No, there is a process, they have to qualify.
Right, so it's not on disability, it's just on, if you're poor, you get the money?
No, it could be disability.
Well, they're already getting paid disability by the government, and the government regulates how much money they get.
So if they're getting, if they're getting federal benefits, then they would receive federal benefits, they would not get the Chapter 115 benefits, which are state, you don't get both. And $50,000 actually is not a lot of money. It just, I mean, there are other, there are, well, there are other communities that pay a quarter of a million, a half a million dollars, $50,000 is not that much money.
So how are we distributing this money? Because I'm still not clear. It's not on disability, it's just on, if you're poor, we give it to you, if you've been in the service?
No, there are requirements, I don't, I'm not the Veterans Agent, so I don't know what the requirements are, but there are requirements that you have to meet. The Veterans Agent submits all that information to the state, and then the state has to approve the individuals that are receiving the benefits.
So you can't answer my question?
I think I did.
I'm asking you, how do you get the benefits?
You apply, you apply to-
You apply for them, but how do you, how do you apply for them? I mean, is it low income?
There's lots of different factors. I know low income, low income is one of those factors, disability is one of those factors. Whether or not you're able to work is one of the factors, there's a whole slew of factors. Each individual is different.
If you get a disability, if you have a disability, you get paid by the government.
If they're getting paid by the federal government, so we're talking federal government and state, the benefits that we're paying are state benefits, that the town has reimbursed 75 percent. If they are eligible for federal benefits, then they would not get these benefits.
So what you're saying is you can get approved by the state, but not by the federal?
Yes, some people are not approved by the federal government, correct.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Barbara. Okay, any other discussion on this held line, which again, that whole department budget was held? Hearing none, let's vote, all in favor of the budget, the budget again was $65,457. Any opposed? It carries, it is not, however unanimous. With that, I believe we have completed the budget. Now, what we need to do, I don't think we made any changes in the total budget, so what we need to do is approve the final budget as approved now, and that's the number, $34,079,952. Any discussion on that total? There really should be none, because we've already been through most of it. Hearing none, all in favor of the final budget? Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Okay, that finishes Article 11. Article 12. Road Reconstruction Repairs and Maintenance. The recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written, that's to appropriate $458,000. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Article 13, Public Access Department, and that's the people that are, do the Sturbridge Cable Vision. In the olden days, we, it was, it's a wash, but you pay for it out of your charter fees every month if you have charter, and that pays their salaries. But the contract and state law requires that we appropriate the money for their contract, and that gets reimbursed by charter. So, that's for $109,766. And I don't, Bruce, are we actually being broadcast live tonight or not? We could not make the connection. So we're trying to broadcast it live, it'll be played as a replay later on, so you can all see what you look like on TV when you get on. Okay, recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. Any discussion on that? Negative tax impact, you certainly are paying it through your charter bill, but it's not coming out of the tax dollar. Any discussion? None? All in favor? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Sturbridge, Article 14, Sturbridge Tourist Association. Now, we have a hotel motel tax in Sturbridge, and that raises money that is divided into three purposes, okay? And one-third of it goes to the Sturbridge Tourist Association and the Betterment Committee, two-thirds, however, goes to the general fund. By going to the general fund, it lowers what our taxes all are, this is paid by people that uses our motels and hotels. As you can see, the one-sixth of this, which came to, would become the Sturbridge Tourist Association, same amount goes to the Betterment Committee, one-sixth is $183,000-odd dollars. So if you multiply that out, that's over a million dollars, so that's a pretty good benefit to the town. We get to lower our taxes, and we get some benefits to the community that we normally could not afford. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written for the Tourist Association. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Article 15 is the sister article, it's the Betterment Committee, and this is a bunch of items, you can see them all listed out, which come up to $183,290 to improve the committee, and it's for several purposes, and you can go through it, it all meets the various purposes that is set forth. Betterment Committee comes up with a list, and those are the ones that hopefully the taxpayers will approve. Recommendation is to approve the article as written. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? We have discussion? We have, somebody have some discussion on this? Yes, yes ma'am. No, 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 please come forward, use the microphone. You're not gonna get away with it. Good try. Give us your name and address, and then what your question is.
All right, Tanya Nessluis in 262 Cedar Street. I'm just curious about the cost of the booking camera and a public safety drone, those seem a little pricier than, you know, what I've seen, you know, shopping online for those items.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said, Tanya.
The public safety drone and the booking camera, I'm curious about where the costs of those came from, because, you know, I know how much those items cost, and that seems a little high.
Okay, can somebody address that? Kathy, you wanna try?
Perhaps the Police Chief could answer it a little more-
It's called passing the buck, that's all right.
It is passing the buck, but-
Chief, introduce yourself, give us your full name, you did last night.
Tom Ford, the Police Chief in Sturbridge. Thank you for the question, and I agree the prices are high, especially on the camera. However, a majority of the cost for our booking camera, it's a, it's a pretty regular camera, probably about a $400 camera, but it's the software to integrate it into our records management system that's most costly, and also included that costs are the year of support, and also our records management, not to double dip, but they're charging us for that integration as well, at a cost of nearly $850 for the year for that. Right now, we're using a standard digital camera that we bought very cheaply, however, our booking photographs, and any of the photographs that we're taking that we're integrating into them are very grainy, and given to 2019, we need some better technology for our booking cameras, especially when we're doing photo arrays and photo lineups and sharing with other law enforcement agencies, the quality of our photographs are pretty weak. Now, as far as the drone cost, that's actually very low for a public safety drone, this drone that's going to be piloted by a certified drone pilot is gonna have infrared technology, infrared camera systems included, color camera systems included in it. The price came from a quote, the town of Oxford has the same system online right now that they are working with and have been working with with the past year, so we utilize their vendor just to get a number. If we find a better vendor with a better quality product that's cheaper than that, we don't have to spend all that money, but we wanna make sure that we get at least the same type of product, so that we can apply the same services.
Thank you, Chief. Any other discussion on this article? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? It carries, it is not, however unanimous. Article 16, Capital Improvement Plan. This is a plan which hopefully the town, every year, sort of sets its priorities for the big ticket items, and can purchase so many a year so that we don't get stuck having to buy all the stuff at once. Okay, recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written, has to appropriate $395,557. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? It carries, it is not unanimous. Article 17, The Ambulance Stabilization Fund. This is sort of a layaway program, if you will, and what we do every year is we put aside so much money against the purchase of a new ambulance, rather than get stuck with the full price all one year. And it's put away, this year, it's $64,000. Recommendation of the Board of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? It is unanimous. Article 18, Fire Vehicle Stabilization Fund. We started doing this with fire vehicles, I believe, last year or the year before. Same theory, rather than get hit with a big cost one year, let's put money aside until we have enough to buy one. And the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written, and that appropriation would be for $100,000 to go into this kitty for a new fire vehicle. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? It carries, it's unanimous. Article 19, The OPEB Trust Fund. To put it short and sweet, this is to pay for benefits for retired employees, the state is required that every town has to have the money on paper, actually have it, rather than just promise to have the money. Sturbridge has been in the forefront of this over the years, of putting money aside. Now, it's not to say that we have put aside all the money we should, I believe our obligation is north of a million dollars. Am I correct, Mr. Bridges?
Yeah, okay. But, so putting money aside, we're working against it, against the day that either one or two things occurs, either we have enough money put aside, or we get some aid from the state or federal government in helping to fund these things. But we're trying to work against that eventuality, so the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Article 20. Now, this is, a couple of concepts here you have to understand. This is that, every year, the town appropriates so much money and raises by taxation so much money. We also have a budget, and hopefully those two figures on paper at the beginning of the year match. You're gonna have a budget of $34 million, so you're gonna raise $34 million. Some comes from state aid, some comes from other sources, and the rest of it comes from our tax rate. Now, what happens is that as hard as you work on this thing, you can't always figure it to the penny, and sometimes, many years, you have extra money left over at the end, and that becomes what's called free cash. Now, you don't give it back to the taxpayers, too bad they don't, but they don't, they give it to you in a different way. And one of the ways they can give it to you is by paying for different articles that normally your taxes would pay for. And another way they can give it to you is by using it, just by putting it into the pot for tax relief, by saying-
pot for tax relief, by saying instead of, "So many millions from the tax rate," no, it's so much less money you have to raise. This year, the recommendation is $350,000. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve that article as written. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Article 21, Capital Stabilization. This is kind of like the ambulance stabilization and the fire vehicle stabilization. Again, if we have to have big-ticket items we have to buy, we don't want to get whacked all in one year. So, they put money aside in a kitty, so to speak. And this year, they're asking for $170,000. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Article 22, Revaluation Interim Adjustments. And the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written, seven to nothing. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? It carries, it is not, however unanimous. Okay. Article 23, Revolving Funds Spending Limits. A revolving fund is when you are charged a fee for different services. It may be to join the basketball program at the rec area, it may be for different board of health permits, it may be for planning department, different permits. And the money doesn't go into the general tax fund to be used by all the town departments. It's held back and used just by that town department that it's listed for. State law requires that you have to put a maximum budget, the maximum we're going to raise this year by these fees is X amount. And this is what this article does. The maximum expenditure, so the maximum they can raise, is listed, and the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Article 24, General Code Codification Services. The recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? It passes, it is not, however unanimous. Article 25, Personnel Classification Plan. It's to transfer from free cash, a sum of $25,000, to do a personnel classification plan study. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. This is for non-union employees. Any discussion?
Rob Serny, 124 Ledmine Lane. The $20,000, we're going to study the personnel classification. I understand what the personnel classification is. Don't we have any town employees that we pay that could do that for us? Or our personnel committee? Could they not do that?
We have both, yes. Is there a question?
Yeah, so I don't know why we have to...
Finance Committee, want to answer that?
We have to transfer an extra $20,000 to get that done.
Yes, thank you. The practice would be to bring in a consultant that would look at not only the classification of employees, compare us to other municipalities in terms of what their wages are, do a job analysis for each employee, and make sure that our evaluation tool for non-union employees is relevant. We don't have an HR department in the town. We have people that conduct HR, but no one that has this practice or this level of skillset to conduct a study of this prod.
I'm not going to pick on you because you're the new guy, but it seems like that would be a good job for our town administrator to do. I'm being dead...I'm not making a joke about it either, you know? You've got a pretty good salary, and I'm sure you're going to...I'm hoping you're going to do a good job for us. But it seems like spending $20,000 just to study something that I would think could be done internally, even though I know whoever's going to be doing it could be potentially part of the study. So, that's where...I would look at the top administration in the town for something to do that. I know you're not qualified for it, but...
I'm not an HR person. My background is finance. It is common practice to use a consultant because they are dispassionate about the outcome. They're not going to weigh it one way or the other because they're just interested in producing a product that's usable rather than competing interests.
So, who accesses the town's HR? Just out of curiosity, I know I work in a company, and everybody has an HR lady, usually a lady.
The recruitment, discipline, and so forth is handled out of the town administrator's office. Payroll benefits is administered out of finance.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this article? Hearing none, we ready to vote? Mary Dillon?
I just want to add something to echo our town administrator. The Board of Selectmen will, from time to time, have employees come forward and assert that they're not in the right classification, they're not getting paid consistent with other positions, the same position in other towns. And rather than correct it piecemeal, we want the level of expertise for a consultant to come in and review all of them, so we're not correcting it piecemeal. And we're making sure that we're being equitable and fair and consistent to all employees, and we think this is the fairest and most cost-effective method to do so.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this? Hearing none, we ready to vote? All in favor? Raise your passionate pink cards. All opposed? It carries, it is not, however unanimous. Article 26, The Water Department. I guess the good news is that there will not be a rate increase for water this year, but...any event, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the budget as written, $1,388,963. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Are there any opposed? Carries, appears to be unanimous. Article 27, If It Comes In and Has To Go Out, The Sewer Department Budget. And that recommendation of that, just a little bit, why is the sewer department $2,523,000? Much more for the outflow. I don't know. $977. Anyways, recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. And again, there will be no rate increase for the sewerage. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? All opposed? Seems to carry unanimously. Sewer Project Debt. Okay. Now, these are to transfer some various sums around from accounts that are no longer needed in those accounts and putting it where it is needed, so to speak. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Article 29, Water and Sewer Rate Study. And this to appropriate $13,000 from the water reserve fund balance and from the sewer reserve fund's balance, another $13,000, to perform a water and sewer rate study for the uses of the town's system or take any action there relative thereto. Recommendation is to approve the article as written. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carries, it is unanimous. Okay. Article 30, Fluoride Analyzers System for Water Treatment Plans. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. And this is in response to a DEP requirement. It's not something that the town is doing on its own. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. 31, Article 31, To Decommission Well Number Two. I guess it's the cost of doing that. $7,000, and the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Carries unanimously. Article 32, Upgrade of Fisk Hill Pump Station. To see if the town will vote to transfer from water reserve balance $850,000 to upgrade the Fisk Hill Pump Station. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Article 33, Betterment Payoffs Dissolving of Betterment. Has to appropriate the sum of $25,000 for the purpose of paying fees of registry of deeds or take any action relative thereto. And the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Carries unanimously. Article 34, Poll Time Change. That's to change the hours the poll opens from 7:00 AM to 6:30 AM. The thinking is to allow people who have to get to work early the opportunity to get to the polls. Hopefully, if they start work at 7:00, they can still make it at 6:30. Any discussion on that? The recommendation is to approve the article as written. Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Article 35, To Establish a Commission on Disability. That's to comply with Mash General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 8J. To establish a commission on disability, the appointing body would be here, the appointing authority, I'm sorry, will be under the statute. The Board of Selectmen will be making the appointments. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. Any discussion? Discussion? I see a hand up, no. Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Carries unanimously. Okay. Article 36, It's a Proposed Amendment to the Zoning Map. That requires a two-thirds vote. With zoning amendments, we have to go through a little bit of a ceremony, so to speak. And first of all, we have...I believe this is the map down here, Gene? Is that the map? Okay. If you haven't had the chance to look at it before, maybe you want to come down, take a look at it. It's the redistrict, an area at 7 Cedar Street, very near Main Street in Sturbridge, the intersection of Main and Cedar. And we have to ask the Finance...not the Finance Committee, the Planning Board whether or not they had a hearing, and if so, what the result was. Does somebody...Mr. Blanchard?
Charlie Blanchard, 26 Fahquai Road, Chairman of the Planning Board. The Planning Board held a public hearing on the citizens' petition for the zoning change on Tuesday, March 26, 2019. The amendment to the town zoning map requested is to rezone the property on 7 Cedar Street as shown on the maps submitted from suburban residential to commercial tourist district. The intent would be to extend the commercial tourist district so that the entirety of the property owned by the applicant, Passage A, which is 420 Main Street, and Passage B, which is 7 Cedar Street, is zoned commercial tourist district. At the meeting of March 26, 2019, on a motion made by Ms. Waters, seconded by Mr. Chamberlain, and voted on six to nothing, the Town Planning Board voted to support the proposed zoning map change requested for the property located at 7 Cedar Street from suburban residential to commercial tourist district as requested, and to provide the recommendation to the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen for inclusion on the town meeting warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. Okay, now, we've done with the requirements of the hearing we have to have. Now, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. Is there any discussion on this article?
Honored Wilson, 21 Cedar Street. You may recognize me as a former Selectman of Finance Committee member, a member of the Tentasque School Committee, or a member of the Planning Board when the first town zoning bylaws were enacted. Tonight, however, I come before you as a longtime homeowner living in the suburban residential zone which this article seeks to change to the commercial tourist district. If approved, it would then become legal to build any of the types of businesses we see existing along Route 20, commercial tourist district. This not only affects the backyard of my home, but others on Cedar Street, Grasshopper Lane, and Snow Street. In fact, this would actually become my backyard. The proponents of the article recently presented to the Planning Board, as shown over here, a preliminary plan to construct a 90-car parking lot should they be granted the change in zone this evening. Before continuing, I have a question for you. Do you get excited when you see a fox, rabbit, deer, turkey, bluebird, or cardinal? I do. You get...the wildlife frequents the woods behind our home, and when our young grandchildren visit us, the first thing they do when they get here is to complete to see who can find the most animals. The songbirds wake us up each morning. That sounds pretty nice, doesn't it? Better than cars starting up, doors closing, lights shining into your bedroom at night? Have you ever said in your life, "Hey, look over there, what a beautiful parking lot"? If so, let me know, I'd like to see it. I'm a proponent of business, and I'm impressed with the development of the White Farm property. It's a beautiful addition to the town. But it should be noted that the property already has a significant piece of land that is already zoned commercial tourist, which could be utilized for overflow parking. It wouldn't need to be paved over. This solution works well in Brimfield where parking is not just one big paved lot, but a series of parking fields. According to the Wright Farm website, the maximum capacity at the barn is 175. There are 137 parking places plus five additional handicap spaces already available on the premises. I presume the Planning Board felt that was adequate when they approved the project. The addition of 94 spaces totaling 232 parking spaces seems to be an overabundance of spaces for the occupancy capacity. I believe this change of zone would diminish the value of the homes surrounding its perimeter. If I were a homebuyer, I don't think I would view a parking lot or any other possible uses allowed in commercial tourist zone, abutting of properties, as an enhancement. I recently attended the Route 15 Charette organized by the Town Economic Director and Town Planner. His purpose was to bring people together for a discussion and sharing of changes in the development of the town. The outcome at the end of the evening was a majority of the people in attendance felt that the current zoning is adequate and were not in favor of making any changes that would have had a negative impact on the residential areas of River Road and Mashbog Road. I ask with the same consideration from you tonight and urge a no vote on this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Anyone else care to be heard on this article? Ms. Ellison, are you coming down to speak, or...
Hi, Angie Ellison, 61 Brookfield Road. I have a question. It is, I guess, more of a statement. It is a citizens' petition, and also, what is it being rezoned for? Is there a specific purpose that has been stated for this rezoning?
Well, this is not a citizens' petition. This is a Planning Board petition. It's a Planning Board.
No. It's a citizens' petition, which means the town didn't sponsor it.
It says in the warrant that the sponsor of the article is the Planning Board. To the Planning Board, which the Planning Board has now adopted and pursuing. Okay.
So, my question still stands, what is the land going to be used for? Is there a specific plan that...
Thank you. Why don't you stand by and see what the answer is?
Jean Bubon, Town Planner. So, the stated purpose for the request was to expand the parking area. However, all of us that deal with zoning know that we have to look at this as... However, all of us that deal with zoning know that we have to look at this as anything, Mr. Arnold is absolutely correct, Mr. Wilson, excuse me, Mr. Arnold, that anything that is permitted in the commercial tourist district would be allowed there when the zoning change, if the zoning change passes. And so, the plan over there shows the proposal by the applicant was for a 90-space parking area with a 50-foot-wide vegetated buffer around the perimeter of that land.
Does that answer your question? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Boobon. Anyone else care to speak in this article? Okay, this is a, yes, sir.
Robert Briere, 50 Arnold Road. I promised myself I'd stay put tonight, would not get up and speak. However, in reading this article, I've lost it. To rezone the property on Seven Cedar Street, this article speaks to me as spot zoning. We have never allowed spot zoning in Sturbridge. There's always been a hurrah about spot zoning, and that's why this is written, and I say everybody should turn it down.
Thank you. Anyone else care to be heard? Ms. Boobon, do you want to respond to that? Okay. Yes, ma'am, come on down. I apologize to people in the balcony, the lighting up there isn't as good as it is down here. It's a little hard to see you sometimes up there. So, if you want to speak, maybe you want to do what Ms. Ellison did and kind of work your way down, I get the hint.
Mike, can I respond to the spot zoning?
Let the new speaker speak, then we can respond to it.
Holly Merchant, 62 Breakneck Road.
Get a little closer to the microphone, please.
Holly Merchant, I live at 62 Breakneck Road. My question is, when the Planning Board first got the application to change the zoning in such a fashion, were the abutters at that time directly affected by this zoning change at that time notified by registered letter, return receipt?
Okay, that's a good question. Ms. Boobon's going to respond to a couple of points here.
So, in response to Mr. Briere's comment about the spot zoning, it's a continuation of a zoning district, so it would not be spot zoning in that respect. In response to Ms. Merchant, the abutters were not notified. Under the state statute, notice goes to all the surrounding towns, it goes to the state, and it goes to the Regional Planning Agency.
Thank you. Okay, any more discussion? Anybody else from the balcony? Anyone else want to be heard on this? Okay, this is a two-thirds vote, so we need a two-thirds approval of this, not a simple majority. All in favor, raise your passionate pink cards. All opposed? The article's defeated. It didn't even obtain a majority, for the town clerk's records. Okay, Article 37, 226 Cedar Street Affordable Housing. This requires a two-thirds vote because, we talked about this a little bit before in Chapter 40, Section 14, if the town is now disposing of land, which it kind of is here, it's kind of convoluted, you'd have to do it by two-thirds vote. And what the article does, it gives the Town Administrator, Mr. Bridges, the power to sell, transfer, convey, fill in the blank, whatever word you like, this piece of land under whatever terms he thinks is the best. So, it's kind of giving him a broad powers to dispose of this. As my understanding, that sounds pretty general and pretty vague, but there is a plan overall here, and I think we can maybe hear a speaker or two explain to what it is. And to that point, do we have some, recommendation of Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. Does someone want to please explain what the long-term plan here is?
Penny Dumas, 136 Walker Pond Road. But I didn't hear what you said.
You didn't hear what I said?
About, would somebody want to explain, what was that thing?
The long-term plan for this, what are we doing here?
The long-term plan. Oh, good, I do know that answer. I didn't know if it was a technical. I just want to let everybody know and take the opportunity to thank Jean Boobon for her hard work. She started this project quite a long time ago and is working with the Habitat for Humanities to bring a project forward to 226 Cedar Street. Just working with Habitat, things don't typically work as quickly as you might expect they could work, because they're doing so much work all over the Commonwealth. So, Jean has gotten to a point where she's been able to bring the project forward to the CPA, the CPC, Community Preservation Committee, and the CPC voted unanimously to support a single-family home on 226 Cedar Street, using up to $201,756 of CPA affordable housing funds. The trouble is, the timing was just too tight to get that article onto this town meeting warrant. So, at the next special town meeting, we will be bringing forward a project, and the affordable housing on 226 Cedar Street will be for a single-family home. It'll be our second Habitat for Humanities project in Sturbridge. The first one went so well that Jean said, "Let's try to do it again." We have a parcel of land that the town already owns, and everything is going along swimmingly, slimmingly, but it just, we ran out of time, so that's what this is for.
Thank you. Okay, now we've had the explanation. Anyone else want to comment on this article, discuss it? It's a two-thirds vote. I'm sorry, Mr. Bridges.
There was a process to select a developer. There was an RFP put out. We had respondents. Habitat for Humanity was chosen as the most qualified respondent, so there wasn't an arbitrary process, it was a very deliberate process. Those results will go to the Board of Selectmen for approval. There'll be a legal document prepared that limits the use of the property for affordable housing, for now and forever, so that's the outcome of that process.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We'll look around both sides here. Seeing none, all in favor. Again, this is a two-thirds vote. All opposed? Carries, it is unanimous. Article 38, To Establish a Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund. This kind of works hand-in-hand with some of the things we've been talking about tonight. The funding of this, the money, can come from a number of sources. One of the most important sources, of course, is the Community Preservation Committee, which by statute is allowed to contribute money towards this trust fund. So, that's an important step forward here for the town, if you people approve it. The recommendation of the Finance Committee is that the town vote to approve the article as written. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Carries unanimously. Article 39, This is for feasibility study of 69 Cedar Street, 60 Cedar Street, I think it's commonly called the REC, am I correct, Ms.? Hello? Lynn, is that the REC? That's the REC, okay. That's to perform a study on the expansion of existing recreation facilities there. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. The money comes here from free cash again. Any discussion? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Yeah, Don LaCroy, 110 Lead Mine Lane. This study, is it going to include lights, fence, grandstands, and restrooms? Is it going to include everything, or just part of stuff, and then maybe a few years down the road, we'll get hit with the rest of the stuff?
Finance Committee address that?
Well, the study really is to see whether that property is even feasible to use for that type of use. I believe there are some wetlands there, if I'm not mistaken, and they have to do, you know, studies of the grounds there to make sure that it can take a field. I know the plan is to have a multipurpose synthetic turf there. There would be parking. I believe that lights are included, yes, and I don't know if there were plans for any seating. Usually, they do have some minimal seating, small bleachers. The REC Committee might be able to answer that more particular. But the feasibility study is really to determine whether that land is appropriate to use, whether there's ledge, whether there's wetlands, that sort of thing. That's the feasibility study.
So, we're just looking at the land, not all the other, the lights in the fields, or the lights in the grandstands and all that? We're not be looking at that, right?
Well, I think that, well, part of it would be to make sure that there was room for everything that you want, the lights, the parking and all that, and whether there's any other uses for it, yes. But really, the actual planning would come after the feasibility study. First, you have to make sure that that property is appropriate for that use, and then you can go into the actual planning stage, as far as laying it out, where's the parking going, where the lights will be, that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this article? Again, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. Yes, ma'am?
Lee Darren, 5 Cedar Pond Road. Does the Conservation Commission support even a theoretical artificial turf field so close to Cedar Lake?
As our representative of the Conservation, Mr. Goodwin.
It would have to be brought forth to the Conservation Commission as a part of the end of the feasibility study. I mean, at this point, we have wetlands right next to, at the high school, our football field, and those are, I think, similar turf to what we're talking about. So, the answer, the general answer would be yes, specific answer would be, we have to see the feasibility study.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Attorney Darren? Thank you. Yes, Mr. Bridges.
Just to be clear, one of the goals of this study would be to get a cost estimate, at least a preliminary cost estimate of the improvement sought, which would include turf, which would include lights, site work, so forth and so on.
Thank you. Yes, sir, in the back. Really like to have everybody have a seat, because we come counting votes, it's hard to do it if you're milling around. The fire chief gets a little upset with me if I don't remind people of that.
Josh Cottone, 1 Cedar Pond Road. My question is, does the study take any effect that it has on the town, the people that live in the area, and also the waterfront property that takes, that's right there?
Again, I don't know who can answer that. Finance Committee, do we know what the, I guess, what the, how broad is this study? What is it, what does it affect? What does it deal with?
Right, yeah, that's what I'd like to know.
Do we know, if anyone can help us on that?
And what are the rec fields zoned as?
Well, that's a different question. This young lady over here, I think, is going to give us some vital information.
Annie Rossioli, Recreation Director. So, what we have left for the remaining property on 60 Cedar Street is what we're viewing. You can look at that across the street from the tennis courts and the basketball courts. 60 Cedar Street is the existing rec area, so that's already been developed. We're looking at the remaining portion, and that's not lakefront.
There is water there that flows into the lake. There is a pond there that's on that property.
We have concerns about the wetlands, and that's what the feasibility study will show, but we, I don't have anything.
What's the zoning? Does anybody know the zoning? What's the zoning?
Hold it, hold it, you don't poll the room.
We're not presenting plans for the zoning.
Ms. Boobon, can you tell us what the zoning is there, would you know? What the zoning in that area is?
I would believe it's suburban residential. Without the map in front of me, though?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. Any other discussion on this article? Yes, in the back. You have two people with their hands up. Is this a team effort, or what is this?
Dina Sexton, 51 Seneca Lane. I would just like to mention the environmental concerns. So, last year, residents were not able to swim for about two months because of blue-green algae bloom, so taking into account any expansion of fields or parking, what effect would that have on residents of Cedar Lake?
Well, I think, these questions are all very good questions, but it's, in my opinion, it's at least the cart before the horse. That's what the feasibility study is supposed to address.
It's a $50,000 horse, though.
So, we can't answer the question until the feasibility study, if it's approved, is done, so.
So, the feasibility study costs $50,000?
$49,000.
$49,000, so.
If it's approved.
Right.
Sir, you had?
Steve Sexton, 51 Seneca Lane, as well. I guess that is the overarching question, right? Many of us who live on Cedar Lake have gone through all kinds of order of conditions with conservation. We know there's wetlands there, we know impervious area, we know there's massive runoff when you do something like this. That is a town rec swimming area. It's, that water doesn't flow very well there. So, I guess the overarching question is, you can go through all kinds of analysis. The concern upfront is, for $49,000, you're probably going to get to an answer where there's some level of impact, no matter, excuse me, a little late-season cold. That is just lake impact, as well as wetlands and everything else. No matter then, to Josh's point, you've got tons of children down in that area, right? You've got people with tight space already to get access. So, it does kind of beg the question as to, before we even go formally spend $49,000 for this, there seems to be a whole list of reasons why this probably isn't the best place to try to do something like this. We all know what the field issues are, we all have kids in school who deal with field issues all the time. We've got a whole host of areas where you could potentially use fields. This is probably one of the least desirable that I could think of in terms of doing something like this. So, is there a way to just avoid spending $49,000 for no reason to get an answer that I think for many of us, given what we've experienced, working through conservation and all, doesn't make a lot of sense? I think that's where we're coming from.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am, in the back. Remember, this is not to build any extension, this is only to do a feasibility study. It's all we're talking about here.
Hello, Erin Carson, 327 The Trail. I am a part of the Recreation Committee.
Please speak into the microphone, we can't hear you.
Okay, this is better. I just want to clarify that the study, the money that we're looking for this study, is going to answer a lot of these questions that have come up. We did work closely with the Conservation Department, Planning Department, our Facilities Director, to move forward with looking to study 60 Cedar Street, which is already an active recreation area that we utilize, with tennis courts, basketball, pickleball, a swimming area, a summer recreation program for children, and it seemed to our committee, moving forward from last town meeting, that this would be the best area to look to expand our recreation offerings for all age groups in our community.
Thank you. Any other comments before we vote on this? Any other discussion? Yes, Mary?
So, Mary Dowling, I also want to echo what this Recreation Committee member just said. The Recreation Committee has been looking now for 10 years, trying to find appropriate land. Town Barn had a lot of ledge, and it was too expensive for the residents, which I understand. Another piece of property is all conservation on the Shepherd Parcel. This land, it's my understanding, is already in the care, custody, and control of the Recreation Committee right now. It used, some of the land was a former skate park, if I remember correctly, and it just makes sense to have as much recreational amenities in one area that we can have. I appreciate the concerns with Cedar Lake, but let's make an educated decision. $49,000, I understand that it's not a small amount of money, but any professional study to determine the right land is going to cost that. And if we vote it down now, and they look for other land, that's also going to cost about $40,000 to determine if it's feasible. So, all these arguments can be presented after we have an appropriate expert look at the field, look at the land itself. But, you know, with all due respect, it is under the care, custody, and control of the Recreation Committee right now.
Thank you. Anyone else hasn't spoken yet on this article? Yes, sir, Mr. Searney. Yes, sir, Mr. Searney.
What I want to say about this is...
Please identify yourself again.
Rob Searney, 124 Ledmine Lane. This actually goes back to the last election we had for selectmen. And Mr. Patel, he had a really good idea when it came to things, maybe taking money out of Betterment to pay for stuff like this, and in his big, it was, it was a really cool idea that we've never really, I've never heard talked about. That would have been a perfect way to, you know, to get $49,000 for this study. Out of Betterment, it doesn't affect anybody, and, because I believe Betterment can go towards recreation, and I think that's something that the Recreation Department needs to look at, too, and the Betterment Committee and everybody else, going, you know, towards the future, is looking for alternate sources of funding. It's something we've been talking about forever when it comes to the fields. That's all I have, I don't, that, the location has got some issues that will probably be identified during the study, if it actually takes place. It's tough. My kid gets rashes whenever she goes swimming over there in the summertime.
Thank you. Sorry for your kid, just thank you for your comments. Any other comments on this article? Okay, I think we're ready to vote, this is a majority article. The proposition is to appropriate $49,000 for a feasibility study for the expansion of the rec area. The recommendation of the Finance Committee was to approve the articles written, and the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen was to do the same. All in favor? All opposed? It carries by far more than a majority, but it is not unanimous. Article 40. Okay, this is entitled Borrowing Authorization, Tantascro Regional School District, and it also says here, two-thirds vote required. Now, normally, if the town is going to go out and pledge its credit, borrow money, state law says you have to have a two-thirds vote. But this is kind of one step removed from it. It's not the town of Sturbridge that's borrowing the money, it is the Tantascro School District. And state law says that, no, you don't really approve it by two-thirds, you approve whether or not you're going to agree that the school district can borrow this money, and that only takes a majority vote. So it's not two-thirds, it's a simple majority. The recommendation of the Finance Committee, when it's all said and done, is to approve that, that loan, subject to different reimbursements from the state school building administration, I guess, the MSBA. There's all, a lot of detail in there, but that's the bottom line of it. Is there any discussion on that article? That's for renovations across the street at the middle school. Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Carries appears to be unanimous. Article 41, the public marijuana consumption by law. And this is not to overturn our present zoning, which allows the sale of medical and/or recreational marijuana in certain districts. This is if somebody wants to spark up on Sturbridge Common, that may not be approved, okay? I guess right now you probably could if you wanted, there's no, tonight you could, but anyways, tomorrow you can't, this is approved. Okay, any discussion on this? The recommendation is to approve the article as written.
Our recommendation was no action, Mr. Town Moderator.
That's pretty interesting. Copy has had the town approve the articles, okay, no action. Okay, no action means, in Sturbridge Parliament, it's our Sturbridge Parliamentary Procedure, it means that unless somebody makes a substitute motion, this article will, I always use the expression, die on the vine, it'll be deemed to be defeated. And the copy of the, of the motion I have says approved, but that's okay. Anyway, having said that, is there, is there a substitute motion coming forward? Going once, going twice? Yes? Yes, ma'am?
I'm on the substitute motion to approve Article 41 as written.
Okay. Need a microphone, identify yourself.
I'll make a sub, Mary Dowling, 9 Wedgwood Road. I will make a substitute motion to support Article 41 as written.
Is there a second to that? Okay. Okay, any discussion? Mr. Blanchard, I think you had your hand up. Oh, you were the second, okay. Any discussion? So now we've turned this around, this is an affirmative article, motion to approve this by law. Yes, Ms. Davis? She needs a microphone.
Karen Davis, 509 Main Street, Sturbridge. So we talked about this article for a long time, and the parties who had voted to not approve this basically had to do with the fact that there are statutes in place, there are laws in place already that deal with these issues, and we felt like this was kind of a double-dipping. So if somebody were to be, I don't know if arrested is the appropriate word, they could be fined under the statute, and now they could also be fined under the zoning bylaws. We didn't really feel like there was a public policy to support this, since we do have the laws in place already.
Okay, anyone else want to be heard? I, I thank people for pointing these people out, yes. I'd like to see, is there a new speaker on this? Yes, ma'am, Ms., Ms. Lucin. We'll get back to you, Mary Dowling, don't worry, okay?
All right, sorry about this. Tanya Ness Lucin, 262 Cedar. I just have a couple of questions on, on two of the sections. One, the public consumption prohibition, or, I'm sorry, the open container prohibition. I have a question as far as how open container is defined, in that we don't have, do we have any kind of definitive rulings on how these items are going to be packaged at the dispensary? And also, we don't have any exceptions within the bylaws about medical marijuana. Knowing some people who have been, you know, prescribed medical marijuana, I, the way that I've seen it packaged, it usually comes in a prescription pill bottle with several joints in it. That being the case, my concern would be that it would lead to overconsumption by somebody trying to finish something off if they, you know, need to take, because they don't want to travel with a full, with a half-dose that they have left over in a container, so.
Okay, the Chief of Police is the sponsor of this article. Chief Keith, can you address any Ms. Lucin's questions?
For the purposes of the open container aspect of this, it's consistent with the current general laws with respect to open containers, and there is an exemption that, in, in this section, that this bylaw shall not be construed to limit the medical use of marijuana. So much like if you had any other type of prescription of Class E substances, that if you had a prescription for them, a prescription bottle that says 20 pills, and you have 16 or 18 pills in that bottle, it's consistent with your prescription, a possession of the same type of marijuana, as you indicated, it would be counted out, made a determination be made by the officer if it's consistent with the prescription for the medical marijuana.
Thank you, Chief.
My question is, to the Finance Committee...
Please identify yourself again for them.
Oh, Penny Dumas, still living at 136 Walker Pond Road. To the Finance Committee, the bylaws that you mentioned that are state, how does it work with the public consumption prohibition? And I'd like to just follow up by saying, if you want to smoke weed, that's fine, but if I'm on the town common, and I'm listening to the music, or I'm at a football game, and I'm watching the kids play football or soccer or whatever, I don't want to be smelling the weed that you're smoking. And that prohibitive public consumption seems to hit that mark, but you mentioned that there's other bylaws, do they hit that mark? With, with confidence?
Ms. Neal?
Yes, we looked at this very closely. There's state law, I don't know if I can remember the general law itself, which one it is, but there is a general law against public consumption right now of marijuana, and I believe that there may be a town regulation against smoking on town land. I don't know if that, I know you can't do it on school property, there is no smoking. But this would also include edibles, which, you know, I don't even know of how you would know if someone was on the town common with edibles, or even in an open container. And we, we discussed this, as Karen said, quite at length, and we thought, number one, that state law already covered this. Number two, that the whole recreational marijuana is still quite new, and that really some of this has to be shaken out in the courts. And third, one of, I think, one of the reasons, though certainly not the main reason, was that Sturbridge does not have a public consumption, or a bylaw prohibiting the public consumption of alcohol, and we thought that that was somewhat contradictory to this law. So you can enjoy your wine and beer on the town common, but I guess you can't have your edibles on the town common. So we did think that was contradictory. We thought that the, the state laws were sufficient, and as far as getting into a bylaw, I think that every time that there's been a new law on marijuana, it's generated a number of cases in, in our court system, going up to the lower courts, the appeals court, to the Supreme Judicial Court, and quite frankly, I'd rather have some other town spend their tax dollars on fighting those and not us.
Thank you. Chief, did you want to add something here?
If I could just indulge you shortly for a bit of the history behind the request for this town bylaw. The previous town administrator, as the recreational marijuana laws, and when the use of recreational marijuana started to evolve and become a new reality, the state laws are almost identical to what this bylaw says, with the exception is, is a $100 violation. At the time, we sought for a stricter violation of $300 for the same offenses, for what we deemed to be potentially a public nuisance violation. In consideration for this, the, the laws that are in effect right now are nearly identical to this for public consumption. You can't smoke marijuana in any public places or any places where tobacco's prohibited. And they define what marijuana shall mean, which includes vapor, vape pens, the actual smoking of marijuana, and edibles, et cetera, as does the open container law, nearly mirror the same state law that's out there now. This was merely putting a more severe penalty on a violation of the same law. So the officers will be doing the same exact amount of work, except instead of the town getting $100 for the violation, the town will get $300, essentially what this boils down to. And again, this was a goal that was set for me by the previous town administrator as recreational marijuana became a new reality. So I'll let the voters and everyone else determine what's going to happen here tonight with this request.
Thank you for the history, Chief. Yes, ma'am?
My question is for Chief Ford. This, and it's twofold, and the first one is, there's currently a breathalyzer test that law enforcement can administer to find out if someone's under the alcohol, under the influence of alcohol, is that correct?
Chief, if you can answer that.
Yes, it is.
Okay. If I'm drunk and driving my car, is there a current test on the, that's accepted judicially and legally, to determine whether I'm under the influence of alcohol?
Under the influence of alcohol?
Or, right, because we're talking about, you've mentioned open container laws not being covered by the same zoning.
I think we're, I think you're a little bit off-point here, we're talking about open container marijuana.
No, she mentioned it, we don't have a mirror image, a marijuana for open containers for alcohol at the zoning level. And I'm asking him if there's currently a law, or is there currently a test available for law enforcement to determine if someone is high or not? As opposed to when we all know that if you are drunk, there is a test to decide, or to determine whether you're legally drunk or not. So that's the question. Is this going to make it harder for our law enforcement officers to do their job?
I think I can answer that question. There is a procedure called DREs, Drug Recognition Experts, and they're state police officers who are specially trained, to render an opinion as to whether or not they believe the person is under the influence of drugs. However, the courts have been very reluctant to accept DREs as expert opinion, so I guess to answer your question, there really is nothing that's been accepted by the courts right now, today, on drug cases. Okay, I think that, that answers the best we can.
Jamind Blansky, 23 Old Hamilton Road Extension. As they were just saying up there, that the laws currently are, you know, being tested in the states right now, and to implement it at our level, that means when the states change, we then have to go back to try and mirror the states. Let's let the states laws shake it out first, before we go through it and then have to revise again. If it's already there, yeah, okay, the town gets a couple more dollars, but, I mean, I have no idea what the amount of potential revenue is, but as a revenue generator, I don't like it as an idea, so.
Thank you. Anyone else hasn't spoken yet on this? Ms. Ellison, I don't think you've spoken to us yet. We'll get to you, we'll get to you. This lady here, she's got her hand up, she's coming down now, thank you.
Angie Ellison, 61 Brookfield Road. The section of the law is MGL, Chapter 94G, Section 13, and it specifically talks about the restrictions, personal consumption, restriction on public consumption, the fee is $100. I would say in regards to this, it literally mimics everything here, except for what the chief said, of $100. And if that's the case, I would offer a friendly amendment to get rid of the entire thing, because it mirrors this, and just up and approve a $300 fine, as opposed to us adopting an entire policy that mirrors this exact thing.
So is that in the form of a motion, or, I'm, I'm not sure what you're attempting to do here?
Just opening it up for dialogue.
Okay, thank you. Will somebody have their hand, yes, ma'am?
Emily Foster, 52 Westwood Drive, Sturbridge. Just as a clarification, I'm not a holder of a medical marijuana card, so I'm not an expert on this, but in Mr. Ford's answer to Ms. Ness Lucin's question, there, as, my understanding is that marijuana is not prescribed the same way pills are, so you would not be able to have five joints in a bottle and produce a prescription for five joints. The procedure is to be approved by the state for a medical marijuana card, and then be able to buy up to a certain amount at an approved facility in a given span of time. So there would be no way to check that someone has a certain amount of their prescribed material on them at a certain time when an officer pulls them over.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to be heard that hasn't spoken? Sir?
Eric Gaspar, 4 Deer Run Circle. Is that a question? This might be putting the cart before the horse, so I apologize, but is this warrant article in any way get us any closer to getting the 3% community impact surcharge that we can put as part of sales as well? Or does that have nothing to do with the, the additional 3% on top of...
Maybe the Finance Committee can answer that.
There we go. That's actually the next article, Article 42, is to put the 3% excise tax.
Which is the next article, but there's also a 3% community impact that we're allowed to surcharge.
It's up to 3%, it's not a flat 3%.
I thought it was 3 plus 3, no?
It is.
It is.
3% excise, and up to an additional 3 of impact, but you have to demonstrate what the impact is.
Right, so does this warrant article get us any closer to demonstrating the 3% impact?
No, they're not related.
They're not related?
No. This is more about just the open consumption, not tied to revenue.
It's not tied to the other 3%?
No. Ms. Dowling, I said I would get back to you, go ahead.
Okay, I just want to say what I, that other 3% gets, goes into a host agreement, is, is my understanding, okay? And so you get a 3% of tax, but the host agreement is the impact statement that you're referring to? Okay, can I?
Yes, please, keep going.
You know, for the same reasons that have been articulated as to why to vote this down, I feel exactly the opposite. There's nothing wrong or illegal about... There's nothing wrong or illegal about a bylaw overlapping with the state law. In fact, we have wetlands bylaws, there's state wetlands bylaws as well. Ours are actually more stringent in some ways than the state law, which I actually support. In this case, this would be a little stricter than what the state law currently is with respect to what the penalty is. But because it is a new area of the law, and we probably will see litigation in the courts about what's allowed, what's not allowed, don't put the decision making in the state statute that prohibits marijuana from being smoked or inhaled in public places. You have your own bylaw in place, and that way there, we are in control of our town. And I do want to comment on the alcohol open...not having an open policy with respect to that. It is somewhat different. I know they're both legal drugs, but one carries a much, much greater smell. If you have an open beer can where somebody's having a glass of wine on the town common listening to a concert, the smell is nowhere near as potent as five or six people smoking a joint. And we have children on our town common at the concerts. I agree with Ms. Dumas at football games. So there's a reason that the state statute is in place. And this is a bylaw that's just reinforcing the current state law, and it keeps control in our own town as to whether or not you want to allow this. And we can always go back in the future, and we can lift the bylaw. Why not put it in place? And in a few years, if it's not a problem, then you can lift it.
Yes, Mr. Water.
We discussed this at great length at the Finance Committee.
Identify yourself.
Jim Water, 78 Allen Road. Excuse me. But the smoking issue is...we debated this at great length. It's no more an issue for smoking on the common a joint than it is for smoking a cigarette. If there's a nuisance, the police can enforce that. So the smoking part's not an issue. What we debated there was two things at length. Double jeopardy under two laws where someone who's facing prosecution or arrest for this is subject to both, $100 fine and a $300 fine. There's a double jeopardy involved here, which we felt was unfair. The other thing was, there's no open container law controlling alcohol. So this seems to be somewhat discriminatory, and we felt that it would open us up to perhaps legal ramifications, because someone could say, "Well, somebody can drink a beer on the common, but I can't eat a brownie." I mean, we're not talking smoking. Remember, smoking is not an issue. You cannot smoke marijuana on the common if you can't smoke cigarettes. So that's controlled under a whole different set of regulations. So for what it's worth, we debated this at great length and decided to vote almost unanimously not to approve this, to take no action. Thank you.
Thank you. Any new speakers that haven't spoken yet on this topic? Yes, ma'am.
Jacqueline Belial, 510 Main Street, Fistale. I live right on Main Street. If you walk off my porch, within five feet, I'm on the town property of the sidewalk. This says I can't do anything on the sidewalk in front of my house? I can smoke cigarettes there, but I can't smoke a joint? I can't eat an edible brownie? This is ridiculous. This is overkill. This is worse than any cigarette restrictions ever were put in place. I can understand not smoking on school property, on the town common, all those places, but to say the sidewalk? That's ridiculous.
Thank you. Anyone else care to be heard? Okay, I think... Yeah. Okay, I'll recognize the speakers. Mr. Eichman.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Moderator, Town Council, John Eichman, again. I don't see any provision for double jeopardy in this. The state statute does allow for a fine. As Chief Ford pointed out, this is a local bylaw that mimics the state statute. It also allows for the fine for the same behavior. I don't believe you can fine twice. Obviously, you have one violation, you fine once.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Mr. Water.
Could I get a clarification? Double jeopardy was probably the wrong phrase. Can a police officer ticket the person under state law and the local ordinance for a fine for 300 and 100 for the same incident if he chooses to do so? Does he have the authority to enforce both provisions or not?
Mr. Eichman, you want to venture an opinion on that?
Mr. Moderator, the statute is not specific on that. In my opinion, he could not. He's enforcing the same law, but I will agree that it is not clear in the statute.
Okay. Ms. Davis. All the attorneys are weighing in here. Okay, here we go.
No, I think we actually asked the police chief that question, and the response was that the officer could choose to fine them under the statute, the bylaw, or both. So the person could be fined for one offense twice. So I don't know that we're using the proper language, double jeopardy, but basically we're subjecting a person to two different penalties for one incident.
Okay, anyone else? Any other attorneys in the room that want to...okay. Someone's moved the question. Do we have a second to that? Okay, this requires a two-thirds vote that will shut off any further discussion, and we proceed to vote on it. Okay, all in favor of moving the question? Is there anyone opposed? Thank you. All in favor...all in favor now of the article. This is, again, to establish a, what do they call it, public marijuana consumption bylaw. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is...thank you, I'll speak. Thank you. I'll do the speaking. Thank you. Is the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to take no action. The recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, however, which has no legal import here, but it's nice to know what our elected officials want, is to approve the article as written. Is that correct? Okay. And there is a substitute motion on the floor? Thank you, I'll get to all this, okay? One thing at a time, okay? And the substitute motion made by Mary Dowling was to approve it, and I believe there was a second on that? Okay, there was a second. Thank you. Okay, so we are back to where we kind of started, where I said there was to approve the article as written. That's what we're going to vote on. So a yes vote means you want to approve this bylaw. A no vote means you don't want to approve the bylaw. Put it very simply, okay? All in favor of the bylaw, raise your passionate pink ticket. All those opposed to the bylaw? The bylaw is defeated. Okay, Article 42. Here's the plan, Stan, so you'll know. We have a special town meeting on after this. Generally, we take a break about now. What we're going to do is hopefully complete the annual town meeting, take a 10- or 15-minute break, and then go into our special town meeting. Okay, that should be nowhere near as long as this one. Article 42, here comes the good one. Local excise on retail sales of marijuana. And the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written, and that would impose a 3% tax, excise tax, on the retail sales of marijuana for adult use. Recommendation is to approve it, and that's from both the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen. Any discussion on that? Comes to getting the money, nobody wants to say anything. Okay. No discussion? All in favor, raise your ticket. All opposed? Lots unanimously. Give us the money. Show us the dough. Okay, now, Article 43. And I apologize if I murder this name, the Quackamquasset Lake South Pond Alum Treatment. The recommendation of the Finance Committee was that the town take no action in this article. Prior to the meeting beginning, when I called for special...for substitute motions, I was given a substitute motion by Carl Nielsen that the town transfer from free cash a sum of $55,000 for the town's share of a matching grant for the cost of treatment of Quackamquasset Lake South Pond, and that the town assume the role of administrative host to the grant. Do we have a second to that? Okay. Any discussion on that? This is a petitioned article. And just if I could just get on my soapbox for a minute. One of my duties, one of my jobs, is that if citizens have petitioned articles, I am more than happy to sit down with you and try to formulate language that is acceptable to the town meeting, so that the people can really vote on what they're...what is really before them. Now, sometimes, and this was...this case came close, but it wasn't quite there, it's so confusing what they're asking for that we can't act on it. And it's kind of unfair, because people put a lot of time and effort into these. So please in the future, I'm...get off my soapbox. If you have a petitioned article, feel free to call me, talk to me, and I'll help you passionately work it up into something that is understandable and can be presented to the town meeting, and it can be voted on. Okay, end of the speech. Now, having said that, any further discussion on this substitute motion? Yes, sir? No, you're just waving? No, thanks. Hi, Russell. Okay, very good. No discussion? All in favor of the substitute motion, signify by raising their passionate pink cards? Is there anyone opposed? It passes by far more than a majority. Not going to count that, no. Having said that, no more business before this town meeting? Do we have a motion to adjourn this town meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor of adjournment? We're going to resume the special town meeting in about 10 minutes. Special town meeting for June 3, 2019. The rules basically are the same as we had in the annual town meeting. Non-voters, we have them already in their position. Voting is the same process. We're going to use the same cards, the passionate pink cards. There'll be no electronic voting, I didn't mention that. We've been working hard trying to get the clicker so we could vote by that, as opposed to raising cards. Hopefully, at some point, we're going to get this done. We just haven't had much luck getting this thing set up and working. Okay, the parliamentary procedure, which I didn't mention before, and I'll mention now, is by town bylaw, a book called Town Meeting Time, put out by the Massachusetts Moderators Association, is our statutory by bylaw guide to parliamentary procedure, supplemented by moderator's discretion, good or bad judgment, whatever he has, and Robert's Rules of Order. And we're just going to pick it up. Now, we start with the annual town meeting ends...we just saw end of Article 43. If we were to have any special town meetings, we would pick up the numbering from there for this year, so it'll be...go on from there. For the year 2019, that year, we're already up to Article...we finished at 53, so we start tonight's special town meeting with Article 54. That's what it is. So, okay, I think we're all set to go here. Substitute motions, we talked about. If you want to make one, we'd really prefer to see them in writing. It's very helpful to us. If you can't do them in writing, we'll accept them verbally. Okay. Article 54 is free cash transfer, the Snow and Ice Deficit. Transfer from free cash, the amount of $50,513.11 to the Snow and Ice account. That's to make up the deficit. The recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? Raise your passionate pink cards? Thank you. Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Article 55. Now, that's unpaid bills of a previous fiscal year. Under state law, if you have that, for somehow bills from a previous fiscal year didn't get paid, it's not a majority vote to approve the payment. It's not a two-thirds vote. It's a nine-tenths vote. Now, that's a pretty high standard. But the good news is, tonight, I am told, we have no unpaid bills from a previous year. And this is put into the warrant, or a special town meeting warrant, is what's called a placeholder, just in case something dribbles in that we haven't figured out before, we'll be able to deal with it. So there's a recommendation of the Finance Committee, it's given at the town meeting. Do we have a recommendation?
No, we have no bills.
So it's no action taken?
No action.
Okay. So that means it'll die in the vine unless somebody wants to jump up and pay some bills that aren't due. I don't know, I guess I'd have to say it. I guess not. Guess not. Hearing none, we'll move on to the next article. Next is the Tree Warden Salary Account. And by the way, I've had the opportunity to look at this warrant, examine it, it's been posted properly, and it's been prepared properly, posted properly, and it's been signed by and executed by the constable. I guess we need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor of approving it? Any opposed? And also to weigh the necessity of second, of reading all these articles and motions and everything else, similarly to what we did at last meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Pink cards? Thank you. Any opposed? Okay, we should have done that before, now we've done it. Article 56, Tree Warden Salary Account. Transfer from free cash, a sum of $5,500 to the Tree Warden's Salary Wages Account. Recommendation of the Finance Committee to approve the article as written. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article 57, Emergency Action Plan, EAP. Proceed upon Dam and Big Alum Pond Dam. Transfer from free cash, $48,000 to cover the cost of preparing an emergency action plan for those two dams. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. Any discussion? You have your hand up, ma'am? No? No? Okay. Just waving? I'll wave to you, too. Okay, any discussion? None? All in favor? All opposed? Carries unanimously. Article 58, Funding for Police Union Contract. Now, this is to fund a contract which was, I believe, is retroactive to what year, Mr. Bridges? Two years ago. Okay. And we have...this will...this new contract, or the fund this thing will end when? When will this contract end?
Next year.
Next year, okay. So this is the...there's the retro benefits of the contract, so to speak?
It's a three-year contract. It's a three-year contract. The wages are retroed in this fiscal year, which ends at the end of June, and the prior fiscal year, which ended last June.
Okay. Okay, so normally, if you approve a ratified police union contract, you're buying the whole project. In other words, if it's a three-year project, you're buying a three-year contract, you have to pay it whether you want to or not in the future. However, because this is a retroactive contract, all we're really doing is paying what's already come...come due into the contract. We have no future commitment after this. Am I correct?
You have one year left on the contract, which begins July 1.
That's this contract, however. That's this fiscal year.
Yes, which is included in the budget, which was already approved at...
Okay, so we're not ratifying a new contract starting three years from now?
No.
Or starting this is the first year? Okay. If you're confused, I've certainly confused myself here. It's all right. Okay, any questions? Any discussion on that? All in favor? Pink cards, thank you. All opposed? Carries unanimously. Article 59, Software/Hardware Upgrade for the Badger Meter System. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the article as written. Any discussion of this? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you all for coming. Thank you, Mr. Covino, the constable. Thank you, Bruce, for your work on videotaping this. Thank you, Finance Committee. Thank you, Lynn Girard, a town clerk. It's a lot of work into these.